Second, Thursday. This is the first meeting of the new Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll begin with roll call.
David Johnson?
Here.
Jason Berry?
Here.
A.J. Weir?
Here.
And David Brown?
Here.
So we have four people. We have a quorum.
And not in attendance, but on the new board are Annette Alexander, Mike Cindy, and Sam Jones. First order of business would be public comment.
Good evening. Alan Steva. Alan Steva? Can you please say again the committee members so I can read them?
Okay. So, David Johnson, the chairman of the PZBA, which is commonly now known as the board. Jason Berry, who's present. A.J. Weir, who's also present. And David Brown, who's also present. So that's four. The other three that are absent? Annette Alexander. Samuel Jones.
Do you know how to spell that?
S.A.M.U.
Your last name?
Jones. And then the third one is Michael Cindy. So that would be seven in total.
Thank you. So you're in the quorum. Thank you. I always thought Planning and Zoning Committees were sanct- sancti- sanct. But good, it was a good check and bad and system in place. Your committee here is very important. We're depending on you. What happened to our residents who were on the previous committees? Why were they not reappointed? They were good residents that we had in place there. Most of them made all the meetings. Take a look at the Massacre Temple Development. What went wrong there? That's what I'd like to know. Not even a public hearing. So you can see how important your committee is and we are depending on you. And we'd just like to know what happened? Why weren't the other members of the committees just reappointed? Was this a political maneuver? Money was wasted to make another committee? We had to spend it on another legal bill for this? What really went wrong there? Just more political shenanigans? That's what I'm asking. We're depending on you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Dillon. I'm owner of Beaumontier Catering. I have been in business for 16 years at the same location, just on 111th Street in Maddochee's District in Chicago. I am looking to purchase the old funeral home at 2601 Vermont Street. Presently, it's zoned as residential. I am asking that it's rezoned as residential special use with the text amendment to be catering. I would like to move my catering company there and have small gatherings like weddings and showers and stuff like that there. I have some pretty longstanding clients that are always looking for something to have, a small intimate gathering. I have a very extensive client list. I work for, I am presently a City of Chicago caterer. So I specialize in most of the backstage catering for the Taste of Chicago, Jazz Fest. So I feed most of the stars backstage and the city officials. I've also worked for the governor. Most of the city council, I've done food for the budget. I've worked for all governors so far, all mayors since I've been here. In case you haven't figured out the accent, I'm from New Orleans. So I specialize in pretty much Creole food. So that is what I love the neighborhood. So far, everyone's very welcoming to the neighborhood and I would love to be a part of it. So hopefully you see fit to make the slight adjustment and change so we can get this eyesore into a beautiful-looking building and something everyone can be proud of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And please do continue to work with Howard and we'll, sorry, please do continue to work with Howard and we'll move this and we'll move it through because we're definitely excited by what you're discussing.
Do you know how long the process would actually take? And also, I have another question. Presently, it still says, I guess on the computer, that it's zoned as a commercial property. However, you guys say that it's residential, zoned as residential. But when the banks pull it up for financing, it's still zoned as commercial. Is there?
I can answer that question. So the funeral home was a legal nonconformity that ceased to exist after six months. It's been almost three years, so it falls back to being a residential use in an R1 zone, which is single-family. So there's no commercial. So you would have to apply for a text amendment and a special use. Text amendment for catering. And banquet hall, because we'd allow for banquet halls outside of the UTOD, and then a special use for the review of the proposal, plus the architectural and engineering plans for your parking lot.
Yes. I've been working on all of that so far.
Great. Because we would, as you prepare all of those things, then we can have it on the public agenda, right, that we have to post two days ahead of time before the meeting and then, so that members of the public are aware that it's up for consideration and they can come express their support, opposition, concerns, and so on. So, yeah, please do work with Howard and, I mean, at least speaking for myself, it would be great to see that property, you know, and your business sounds great.
So I'd like to interject. Thirty to 15 days for a public hearing notice and a newspaper, a physical sign on your property, and then, like he said, Mr. Johnson, 48-hour notice for the agenda to be put on the bulletin boards outside East Annex and City Hall. So there are two criterias.
Okay.
Thirty to 15 days. We're going to use the 15 days. So that's when an advertisement has to be done. We're currently meeting on the first Thursdays of every month until the end of the year. So the newspaper criteria cutoff is going to be in the middle of the month before the first Thursday.
To my understanding, I believe Howard said he was working on the newspaper portion. Is it something that I need to do?
No.
Is it something that you guys do?
Howard does it.
Okay. All right. And as far as a sign on a property, that's something that I need to do?
Howard does it.
Okay. So there's nothing really I need to do other than?
No. What you need to do is eventually fill out the application, provide the supporting materials, an architectural plan showing how you're going to revise the interior building layout, and an engineering plan for the parking lot.
I've got just about all of that. Thank you.
Yeah. And for the board to be aware, she went through the, you know, the business is being sold and being reviewed by the building department. So the notes are being typed up as I was speaking with the building inspector earlier this afternoon. So they're going through the intent to sell, intent to purchase process, which is the step one, and she's going to probably receive a report shortly.
Yes, they've done the inspection already. I'm working on. I actually tried to contact the, I think Robinson was, used to be on?
Right. Robinson Engineer is no longer the engineer for new projects.
Right. Well, because they used to be the one that viewed the project, right?
And the past.
So I think he was the perfect one to actually do the project for me and they?
Possibly.
They declined because I don't think they know that they're not under contract. I was like, okay.
No, no, no. Robinson Engineering is a very delicate subject. Robinson Engineering is still doing work for projects that are still open. We have a lot of open projects. So because of that, probably they cannot take you as a client because they're still working for the city on other projects and that could show favoritism. So we do have a new engineering firm, which we're allowed to now proceed with. They had to go through the city council process for that to happen, which happened not so long ago. So maybe it's to your opportunity to look for another engineering firm or ask Robinson if they know others.
I actually found one, but I just wanted to let you know, I didn't say that they weren't under contract. I just, when they called me back and declined the job, I just said, okay, fine, you know. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to let you guys.
Yes. So what I'll do is I'll give you a copy.
You have the schedule, same line of yours? We can get you a schedule that has the, basically, so like Howard said, we have monthly meeting, we have a monthly meeting and there are dates in advance of that meeting, depending on what you're trying to do in order to be on the agenda for consideration. And so, for example, the November 4th meeting, there's a October 19th deadline and an October 12th deadline. So, and we can get you those dates.
Thank you. And I'll get everything to you prompt.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes public comment. Moving on to old business. The review of minutes from the former Planning Commission and the review and approval of minutes from the former Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe these were shared electronically. Do we have a motion to consider these for approval?
No motion.
Second.
Okay.
Would you like me to walk through the?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Great. Brown?
Brown, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Roll call vote. Sorry.
Yes, I.
Brown was a yes?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Carrie's fora?
Now, is this for Planning Commission or Zoning Board of Appeals or was this a combined?
The combined minutes together.
Okay.
Both. And folks, please bear with me. It has been, it's been a while since I have presided over a meeting in Robert's rules. So appreciate your support if I speak in error. Moving on then to new business. The first item of new business is Open Meetings Act and Hearing Procedure Training for Montana Welch LLC.
Erin, did you want to do this or did you want me to take it? Okay. All right. So hello, everyone. Again, Ryan Morton for Montana and Welch. Erin is here as well and we won't always be here together, but we wanted to give you an old face and a new face to welcome this board together. Howard had asked us if we could just go over some of the basics of the Open Meetings Act, just as a refresher for everyone and to make sure everyone's on the same page starting out. Also, there is a requirement, as you know, I think all four of you have served on commissions before, right, versions of the board? So as you're aware, there is a requirement that when you come onto a public body, you need to then, within 90 days, pass the Open Meetings Act training on the Attorney General's website. That would apply to you because this is a new board. These are new appointments that were made. However, the Attorney General's website has been down for many, many months for not, not the entire website, but part of the website that is involved in Open Meetings Act training, that part is down. So the AG's office recognizes that people aren't able to go through that training. There have been attempts by firms to offer their own training to substitute for it and have that count and the AG's office has said, no, we're only going to count our own, but you don't have to do it yet until we get back up and running. So eventually, at some point, you'll have to go through that training, which is just going online and, you know, looking, answering their questions. In the meantime, though, we didn't want to wait till that, so we thought we would at least give you a few pointers. So what we passed out here, what Howard passed out, is just a few slides that we put together to give you some of the most important aspects of the Open Meetings Act. So we'll just go through that and if you have any questions during this, please let us know. So generally, the Open Meetings Act requires that all meetings of governmental bodies be open to the public unless one of the exceptions applies. That's the general go-to when thinking about open meetings, is that openness is preferred and assumed. So the Blue Island Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals is considered a public body by the definition of the OMA, so we are required to follow it. So here's something that can be a little confusing. Meetings. Has the OMA been triggered or not? And Howard and I, we had a little discussion about this last week. There's a difference between gathering, a meeting, and an open meeting. And so you have to consider those separately. Since you are a seven-member board, a quorum, as we know, is four people. That's why you're able to conduct this meeting. A majority of a quorum, then, is three people. So for the purposes of the Open Meetings Act, two members of the board can discuss public business without needing to post notice, without it being in the open, because those two members are not a majority of a quorum. Those two members, the logic behind it is those two members could not vote a certain way and determine the outcome of something. That's why they make it that way. Once you get to a majority of a quorum, three members will then, when you have only a quorum showing up, then that majority could decide things. So that's why everything has to be out in the open. So three of you can't meet outside of the confines of a properly noticed meeting and discuss public business. You can discuss other things where, you know, if you're friends outside of this, we're not telling you, don't go to each other's houses anymore. But in terms of talking about public business, that has to be done in the confines of a meeting. And then four members, that's a quorum, and you need that to take action. So three of you, if, let's say, one of you didn't show up tonight, you could all still sit and talk about public business because it was a properly noticed meeting. Everyone knew this meeting was happening. But because there wasn't a quorum, you couldn't actually take any action. So at that point, it's almost a pointless meeting and it's better to just adjourn and do it another day. But so that's the distinction between two, three, and four people being present. It gets confusing. So if you have any questions, please let us know.
Yeah. Properly noticed.
Yes.
So what constitutes notice? Because I know, like, you know, we post the meeting or then the agenda out upfront, but?
Yes. And for a regular meeting, that's all you need to do. If you've put your list of meeting dates out at the beginning of the year, you voted on that, which you have, I know we've got that list there and you'll do it again next year, you have that list of set regular meetings, then to be properly noticed, 48 hours at least before the meeting, you just have to post it at the location of the meeting. And it should also be posted online because you have, arguably, you have a full-time staff member who's managing things and you do post these things online. So those would be the two ways to be properly noticed. And anything that's on your agenda has to also be available to the public. If the public wanted to come in and look at whatever is posted there, they'd have to be able to do that. But you don't have to, you know, staple a whole package to your bulletin.
To reiterate again, reiterate, anything that has a motion for variance or special use also has to go through the state statute requirements, right?
Yes. Yeah. So when we're talking about a public hearing, as you mentioned earlier, that's where your 15 to 30 days beforehand notice has to be sent out. Those are different requirements specifically for public hearings for special use, variance, zoning amendments, that sort of thing. But that's separate from the Open Meetings Act. In terms of publishing notice for a meeting, that only comes in in specific scenarios, which we don't have to get into right now. That's more nuanced. Likely won't get into those cases. Although, just generally, if you wanted to hold a special meeting, like what I might talk about later, having a special meeting to kind of move some of the simpler applications along, you don't need to publish that either. Again, that's just 48 hours' notice for a special meeting in that case. So looking at this, all this information is here on these pages. Remember the OMA meeting recipe? A gathering, majority of a quorum, and discussing public business. Those three things together make it an open meeting. We talked about what the majority of a quorum would be. It's three people on this board. And if you can look real closely at those cartoons, they're very funny. Let's go through some hypotheticals from the PAC. The PAC is the Attorney General's Office, the Public Access Counselor. They put out opinions. When someone is accused of violating the OMA or FOIA, the PAC weighs in. And here on this first one, immediately prior to a meeting of the Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs Committee and the McHenry County Board, three of the seven members, so a majority of the quorum, met to discuss whether an alternative redistricting map should be brought up and discussed during the committee meeting. However, the three members did not discuss the topic at the same time. They did a rotating, all right, I'll talk to you and then you go talk to this person. And that's how they were getting around the majority of a quorum meeting at once. The PAC found this was a violation because they still engaged in contemporaneous communication. So when we're talking about a meeting, it's not just a physical gathering. It's also, remember, phone calls, it's text messages, it's emails, contemporaneous communication. If you are emailing two other members of the board about public business, that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And using the other sunshine law, FOIA, people can get access to that and then the village gets, the city gets in trouble. So be sure to avoid contemporaneous communication with anyone, any more than one other person from the board when you're discussing public business. The next opinion, though, the next hypothetical, just summarizing that quickly, if you're just doing a cursory discussion of, hey, we should bring this up at the meeting, or, you know, when's a good time for us to talk about this and you're not getting into the nuts and bolts of it, that's all right. That's not just full discussion of public business. So you're all right on that situation.
Agenda setting.
Agenda setting, as long as you're not getting into the details of what's being discussed, you're fine to email about that. It would be a lot more difficult to coordinate schedules if that weren't the case. But be wary of that because emails, instant messages, text messages flying back and forth, it's very easy to get caught up in that conversation and then you've crossed the line. So be very careful. One of the key things that we tell clients is, don't reply all. If an email comes to everybody from Howard, then, and you have some thought you want to share to Howard about an application, just reply to Howard. Don't reply to anybody else. So those three points on Slide 7 here. Smart Commissioners will, one, avoid discussing public business with other commissioners via instant message or text. Two, avoid replying all when responding to commission emails. Excuse me, that should be board emails. This paragraph should be board. And allow some time to pass before responding to an email from more than one board member. Looking at the next hypothetical, this was Erin's hypo. All of this was Erin's work, but she asked me to change some of the words from commissioner to board and I did catch them all, so that's on me.
I think I can stop there.
In an effort to get to know each other, the Blue Island Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals decides to go out for burgers and beer at the local watering hole. Board members have fun talking about their personal backgrounds and whether the Bears will make the Super Bowl. One board member comments, what a great group of people on the board. I hope we always work this well together. Another board member agrees. And Greta Gadfly, the local busybody at the watering hole, has been eavesdropping. She says, aha, Attorney General, here I come. This would not be a violation, as we discussed. It's very cursory discussion. It's not actually getting into the public business. Slide 9 is the agendas in public comment. Public bodies must identify the general subject matter of any ordinance or resolution. So in terms of what's proper notice on that agenda, we don't want it to be too much information. We don't need to put the minutes on the agenda, but it should be enough so that someone can tell what's going to be discussed. For instance, there's a hypothetical that gets into this, but if this were a board that had employees and you were terminating an employee and there was a severance package attached to it, simply saying approval of severance package without saying whose package or the amount or giving some sort of information, that wouldn't be enough. So you have to give a little bit of information to people. So for instance, on this board, if you have a zoning amendment, right, a map amendment that's being proposed, don't just put map amendment. Actually say what the map amendment is from R1 to C2 or whatever the case may be. Put down that and put the address so that people can get a clear idea of what is going to be discussed. And Slide 10 here. You may not vote on something that's not on the agenda. That's a big no-no. However, you can discuss something that wasn't on the agenda. So if you realize that, oh, I want to talk about this, for instance, if someone brings something up at public comment, you can obviously vote on that because it's not on the agenda. But if you want to have a discussion, you can do that as you wish during the meeting. Final action must be preceded by a public recital of the nature of the matter being considered and other information that will inform the public of the business being conducted. So that's in addition to the agenda itself. Before, as chair typically, you would say what's being voted upon before the vote happens. Public comment. OMA provides that any person shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established. Every PZBA meeting, the board must allow members of the public to address the board at some point. So you should develop some procedural rules that'd be a good idea to, if you want to govern how those discussions went. The comments today were great, but, you know, in the future, if there's a huge amount of people, you might want to have some sort of procedure on the books that we're going to limit the discussion so it doesn't get out of hand. Public comment does not mean, though, that board members are required to engage in a debate with a member of the public, endure abusive or harassing behavior by a member of the public, or answer questions on the spot. All you have to do is listen. That's all you need to do. And if it is harassing, it has to be a pretty high level for it to be considered harassing because you are public officials and some people are going to say some things that, you know, they're not going to, you're not going to like necessarily. And unfortunately, you just have to take it to a degree. Public bodies may not require a member of the public to provide his or her address or register in advance. That gets a little tricky with the virtual meetings in terms of taking public comments, but that's not a bridge we need to cross right now. Closed meetings. This is an area of Open Meetings Act that causes a lot of problems because people try to get in under exceptions that don't really apply. There aren't a lot of exceptions that specifically would apply to this body, though. There aren't a lot of things that you can go into closed session to discuss. So I'll just, I'll leave those slides for you to look at to get an idea of, just some interesting things to think about if they should come up. I think maybe one of the only ones that could be used that's mentioned here is litigation. If litigation is probable or imminent, you might be tempted to go into closed session to discuss that, but the standard is pretty high for whether it is probable or imminent. You need a very solid basis for thinking this is actually going to suit. Not just what we decide here might, you know, somebody might not like it and they might file a lawsuit. That's not close enough to probable or imminent to discuss it in closed session. And to close a meeting, you just have to have a majority of a quorum voting in favor of doing that. It doesn't have to be on the agenda in advance, as long as it was a properly noticed open meeting. And you just have to mention what section you're going in under. And then there's something about closed minutes, but again, that's not going to apply that much to this board. Are there any specific questions about Open Meetings Act that you have in mind? Anything that's nagged at you from other commissions? Erin, anything I left out?
But if anything does come up, if you're concerned or you just want to run something by us, feel free to just call and tell us. We'll shoot out the email with our contact information.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No action required on, no board action required on that.
No board action required on that.
So moving on to the next item of new business is proposed, consideration of proposed text amendments. Ordinance number 2021-024 to Title 15, I'm sorry, Chapter 150, Building Regulations and Construction, and Title 15, Chapter 166, Zoning Code, and the Uptown Transit Oriented Development UTOD District Ordinance. With this, on this item, I would like to have Howard brief us on the nature of the text amendment.
Okay. So in the agenda, I noticed the ordinance number 2021-024. This is the one that
This is the one that was passed by city council that pretty much eliminated the former planning commission, zoning board of appeals, the action itself for us to meet tonight. Now, what we're reviewing is the continuation of 2021-0024, but this is to revise the existing codes that we have currently. The zoning code and the UTOD, the Uptown Transit Oriented Development District, which is a standalone ordinance from the regular zoning ordinance. And we're also looking at the sign section of the zoning code and also part of the Chapter 150, which is the construction building code. The reason why we have to revise it because it's using the older names like former planning commission, zoning board of appeals. When it comes to the building code, it's referring back to the community development committee, similar with the sign section of the zoning ordinance, says, variances for signage is going to be reviewed by the community development committee. So, now, what this ordinance is doing, it's just cleaning up all of that language and revising sections that don't pertain to, let's say, at the UTOD, the planning commission or the zoning board would make a final decision. Now, any decision, any recommendation here is recommended to the city council. So, you're recommending, let's say, a special use of variance to the city council. The only exception would be a zoning appeal, right? You're hearing the zoning appeal, like administrative judges, your, your determination, your answer, your result is, it's done. It doesn't go to city council for anything. So, this ordinance that we have here, 2021-0XX, is just basically looking at those sections of the codes that I mentioned. And that is part of, you know, what I described here in the memo, I just summarized it pretty quickly, but this was also included in your packet. Basically, it's, this ordinance has given us permission now for the next meeting to hear special uses or variances, because currently, we can't do it right now.
If I could interject real quick, I have no, no problems with what Howard said, but as you probably are aware of, having served on these committees before, there are a lot of different documents around, a lot of different versions, what, as someone in the public mentioned, what's online is different from necessarily what's being referenced by staff. So, this is the first step in getting us to consolidate and update all of that. So, we'll get this done today so that this board can, you know, review the things that need to be reviewed, but we intend to, in the next couple of months, bring back another larger revision that consolidates the previous versions, not making any changes except to the way it's codified so that things are all in one place and everyone can go to that one place to see it.
So, just to explain a little bit, the online version, American legal, has information that's a little dated, so I'm using a physical copy here where a lot of the ordinances that were passed from 1991 onwards is here. So, sometimes I'll use this as a reference, but in the special use or variances, I'm going to quote the two sections until we clean everything up. So, you'll see Chapter 166, point something, something, and maybe here is, you know, 9.1 section, whatever. So, you're going to still see that, it's going to mirror each other because the stuff that's online is not correct, except for the signage, that was revised in 2014, and it's correct because I was doing a review line by line and everything is there versus the copy that I have with myself or on my planning and zoning page. The difference is, my copy has illustrations, American legal doesn't, and it's just numbering versus lettering. But again, I'm going to do this simultaneously until we get this corrected. So, let's say, hopefully, beginning next year, you know, Chapter 166 is updated to the point where we could all look at it and say, yes, this is the reference. Now, keep in mind, I'm also revising the zoning code in, in length also, so that's going to be another change further down the road, step one to step two.
Right, but at, at this time, this is what we're considering to refer to council today is, is cleanup, right? So, it's follow-on to cleanup references so that they're to the PCBA instead of to three different bodies. And, yeah, and that, that's the, that's the single biggest thing that we're, we're considering today. And then otherwise, we're also moving towards this general cleanup of, of the adopted ordinances matching in every place that you look for them.
Yes, it's mostly cleanup, except there's, as Howard mentioned, the couple places where the community development committee no longer exists. So, putting that also, so it is giving a few more responsibilities to the PCBA.
So, for example, I'd like to just chime in with the two examples. Chapter 150, Building Regulations and Construction, there was a section that a community development committee would review fencing for decorative purposes, it was a, a variance through them. We, as a group, either planning or zoning board of appeals, used to review variance applications that are four feet and taller, six feet in the front yard. So, basically, we're moving all fences towards your board, no more community development committee. And the second one, kind of like what I mentioned before, signage was always reviewed by community development committee, now it's going to be reviewed by you. Now, just take a step back. I still, as the zoning administrator, under the zoning code, I still review applications for signage when they come in through the building permit process. So, for example, a person's putting up a, a new wall sign, they meet the code, I could sign off on it administratively because they met the code. Now, if they're debating with me about the size or the location, then it's going to be a variance that's going to come to you guys, sign size or number of signs, what have you. So, that's going to be a new responsibility prior to community development reviewing it. So, a good example was the Dollar Tree at 127th and Western. Those two wall signs on either side of the building, because it's a corner building, went through community development committee for that purpose, for variances, for making the signs a little bit larger and moving them a little bit higher towards the cornice of the building, the parapet. So, that's an example where now you'll be hearing it as the PCBA.
Any other questions or discussion? So, right, so do we have a motion to, to recommend to the city council that they adopt, that they adopt changes as proposed in these draft ordinances to, to the building, building code, zoning code, and UTOD ordinance?
I'll motion.
Second.
Okay, I'll go through the roll call. Weir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes new business. We move on to commissioner comments, so don't have, don't have too much prepared, I'm looking forward to working with everybody and getting, getting to know you, AJ, we haven't met. And I'd like to remind everybody, we've got three more regular meetings scheduled, first Tuesday of the month, or sorry, first Thursday of the month, I believe, for the rest of the year, so that's October 7th, November 4th, December 2nd. Something that came up earlier that I flagged as a note, I, between now and then, between now and the next meeting, I'm going to talk to Howard, I, I think it's a good idea to have some, to adopt some guidelines around things like public comment, you know, looking at what do we have, what did the previous boards have in place, you know, maybe looking at stuff like that, just so we have some, so we have some framework there in case we find ourselves, you know, dealing with a real high visibility issue or something. So, I think that'll be something good for us to consider next month.
If I could chime in real quick, and I, I handed this out, or rather, Howard handed it out for me, but a little cheat sheet for how to conduct a public hearing.
Yep.
So, this would be for your discussion about how you want things to run, this would be a good jumping off point maybe for, this is what we would recommend as a sample for proceeding through public hearings.
Great, so yeah, because this is a new body, so we don't have any of those sorts of things to fall back on that might have been done in the past, you know, some of that sort of administrative stuff, if we can, we can see what the, what the previous bodies have done and things like this, just so we have some, some rules in place. So, yeah, I, I'm, you know, I'll, to, you know, echo what Mr. Stevo said, you know, we, this, what, what we, what we do is, is, is important or it will be important when some, when some key matters come before us, and so, yeah, you know, the more we can have, the more we can have structure and accountability, the better. So, with that, does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Great, then.
In the time, 7:00 PM.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting to 7:00 PM, splitting the difference between. So, we'll continue with that and obviously, if we, I think as time goes on and we are as a, as a full body, all seven of us, we'll, you know, we'll determine, are there other dates, times that might work better for folks? Probably not modifying the 2021 schedule, but we'll, we'll, we'll look ahead in 2022 as, you know, is there a different week or day of, day of the month that's going to work better? So, we'll, we'll revisit that. So, if there's no other business or no other comments, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
A second.
Brown?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We adjourn.